Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 9th, 2015 City Attorney's Court meeting. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with great justice for all. Just a few housekeeping issues before we get started. Have your cellphones on, if you can sign a petition, please, at this time. Also, if you have the need to have a conversation, you can go out to either one of these side rooms here, the conference rooms, that would be great. Restrooms are to my left. Last but least, if we have an emergency, we're going to exit either side, out to the down-to-the-ground floor, and out, we're not going to use the elevators. Thank you. Introductions, my name is Wayne Platt, I'm the chairman. We have Vice Chairman John Goyer Jr., we have Charles Palaco, and we have Jamie Mills. Also, we have Suzanne Cahill, the City Planner, she's the director. We have Kyla Haber, the Assistant Planner. Item number one on the agenda is the open public speaking. We allocate fifteen minutes for this purpose. It doesn't necessarily have to do with anything, it's on our agenda. If anybody's interested in coming up, you can certainly come up to the microphone. Good evening, can you state your name?
I'm Hillary Harvey. Thank you for hearing me. I live at 26 Abiel Street, one of the properties adjacent to the Irish Cultural Center site. When I bought and moved into the property this past July, I knew that the vacant lot next door was marked with the Irish Cultural Center building project. And I had a conversation with someone.
I can hear you.
I can't hear you. That's static. Don't think you can hear me.
Okay, number one, you can start over again.
Sorry. My name is Hillary Harvey, and I live at 26 Abiel Street, one of the properties adjacent to the Irish Cultural Center site. When I bought and moved into the property this past July, I knew that the vacant lot next door was marked with the Irish Cultural Center building project. I had a conversation with someone under Race Electronics about I'm hired tonight to make an offer on the house right now. It sounded like my two children would enjoy the Irish step dancing classes, and my aging mother who lives in the apartment upstairs of our house would like theater that they were planning, and my husband is Irish, so maybe they'd remember. We spent July fourth on the ITC's lawn with the community, viewing fireworks off the Nandwelly Bridge. And whenever they came to the property, for various reasons, we were always introduced to ITC members, and we even joined neighborly chats with them all on our respective ones. Despite all this informal contact, we only learned a couple weeks ago that the ITC needs and needs to be with us in order to do their build. We read in the newspaper that they received a sizable grant recently, so when they came to the ITC property recently to take down the building, we weren't surprised. They didn't make any contact with us that day. But when I was playing with my three-year-old son in our backyard a couple days later, I became concerned to see the property line scrape into my grass. Looking for more information, I called the Building Department, and they directed me again to Race Electronics. And that's when I was given the contact information for Bob Carey, the ITC's president contractor. He came right over with a survey map from Building Design, and he offered to come back with the architect to meet my husband and my mother another time. And he said that they plan to break down within a few weeks, this November, so this month. Over the course of several conversations with Bob Carey, we learned that the ITC wanted permission to go fifteen feet into my property at 26 Abiel Street and excavate at least five feet down, more in places where there was a hill, and that they planned to take down a stone wall that's built directly on the property, the shared property line, half on our side and half on theirs. My husband and I haven't had the opportunity to work with the Building Department before, and I've never submitted a comment to any grant board ever. So we've had to try and do a lot of research, and the Building Department staff at Sue Cahill have been very generous in educating her on this process. It's led us to some questions that we suddenly realized we had, and that's what I bring to mind. So while they're building, what will the construction fence be like? Will it be sturdy and well-maintained to keep out my three-year-old and six-year-old and their friends? And, you know, we play outside all year round. Just because it's winter, we play outside. When they excavate the five feet that Bob Carey says they need into the cliff, will that affect the stability of the cliff that it's on and the stability of the adjacent properties? If they hit rock or they're excavating and can't get far enough down, will they be allowed to drill? That is a great concern, because it's most likely to affect the stability of my store and house and cause lasting damage to its structure. Will the ITC building and parking lot be permitted to have floodlights that are kept on all night and signed into my three-year-old's bedroom? Is Chicago a major climate change trust? Right now, the lot is empty and dark, as I imagine. Will the roof garden that Bob Carey showed us in the design adhere into the Tenki and noise water dance for Kingston? Or will people be allowed to be up there during events late at night? And then when they're up there, feet on the ground, will they be able to see into my house and watch my children play in the yard? And will they have access to the property line if it's built right up? The building is supposed to be built right up to the property line, so will they then, from the roof garden, have access to the property line? What if they drop things down? Recently, my neighbor on the other side, according to Abiel Street, Deanna Baum, said that people from the Irish Cultural Center during a fundraiser were peeing on the property. So is they do that after the roof garden? That's not a great concern. And when they're having these two hundred people events, Bob Carey hopes that Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, will disrupt parking in the name of the land that's already desperate for parking? Even with the ITC's two proposed parking lots, Bob Carey says they'll ban their cars onto the municipal lot on West Strand. So my husband and I are here today to respectfully request that when the planning board can come up with answers to these questions and any other questions and proposals from the Irish Cultural Center project, that you also take into consideration the family of six who lives next door and all the people who go to sleep each night on that block. We do understand that we live in a commercially silished street. We just paid the first installment on our school taxes, but we know this really well. We've lived in the neighborhood for six years now, and we chose it because we enjoy the urban community and commercial resources. However, we want to place this ITC, it will be the only non-residential building on this block at Abiel Street, the only beautiful place where people don't go to sleep at night. And it will be the only lot with an active parking lot that crosses the sidewalk for children's play. So we'd like to know, much of the information we've been given, actually, from various sources, is also contradicting. Bob Carey said that they aren't going to break ground in November, that amusement for the stone wall on the shared property is not necessary, and that everything has already been approved by the Kingston authorities. But when we talked to the Building Department, they said they have no current paperwork, and the planning board said that the Earth's Cahill set certain deadlines to approve the design change, and cannot say that by the ITC. So despite the fact that we only learned about the need for amusement from our property a few weeks ago, when I reached out to Bob Carey, I heard from the planning board that the need for amusement concerning the stone wall on the property has been on hold for three years. This Saturday, Bob Carey gave us the amusement paperwork, which he mentioned to us in mid-October, which is concerned that things might move forward on this project, and that the proper procedure is being followed. The ITC will be a wonderful thing for the community if done in the first act for everyone who lives around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristen Wilson, and I'm a homeowner at 66 Rubine Street in the Round W of Kingston. My mother is a three-and-a-half-year-old. I also work on public health in Kingston and Ulster County, although I don't represent my workplace today as I speak. I'm here today to request that the Planning Board hold a public hearing for the shooting range project proposed on Prince Street. And I understand that according to Kingston's Code, Section 45-30, the 1486, the Planning Board may hold a public hearing on the site plan if it determines that the matter is of wide public interest. I'm very surprised that a public hearing was not scheduled for the site plan, as I believe it is of wide public interest. The news article about this came out during election period, when we were occupied with other public interests, and I believe that the community needs more time to understand and consider this proposed building use. Kyla Haber wrote an email to me, and he was explaining that if the Board made the decision based on site details, it impacts the zoning code of public input. And that being said, this site review has potential to spark a debate on the national politics of gun control and gun-related issues and concerns. This would not be part of the decision, and the Planning Board would not be the forum to debate these concerns. However, I am concerned about this approach to a planning decision. I do not want to suggest that we debate federal and state gun control laws on the Planning Board. Yet, we are a community that is part of the nation struggling with gun violence, and we have been seriously impacted by gun violence in our own little city. Just recently, a shooting took place in my neighborhood one block from my house. The American Public Health Association and the National Physicians Alliance see gun violence as a public health epidemic. We have a nationwide problem, which we collectively, as a nation, have not found good solutions to prevent. I think we need to think about the gaps in federal and state gun control laws when we consider citing the shooting range and a gun dealership in a neighborhood and a business community near the Kingston High School. I believe that one of the roles of the Planning Board is to consider public health and safety when we make your decisions. I have some specific questions and concerns about this project that I hope will be answered through a public hearing. Where are the clients of the shooting range parked? And what sort of security measures will be in place for people walking to and from their cars with their guns that they would use in the shooting range? By citing the shooting range in a populated neighborhood, will it be a risk that gun owners could be assaulted to steal guns on the way into from the car? Will the risk of misguided vigilante, a law of buying a gun owner, take justice into his or her home hands, be increased by citing the shooting range in such a populated location? Will citing the shooting range and gun dealership in a walkable, accessible neighborhood encourage an increased gun ownership in Midtown Kingston, and would this potentially increase gun-related violence in our city and our neighborhoods? What will be the procedures for renting a gun in the shooting range? I don't know the procedures very well myself. I understand there are no federal background checks required for gun renters, although there may be state, and I'd like to know more about that. By citing a shooting range in a heavily populated area, will the risk of getting a gun into the wrong hands be increased? In some, does this use of this commercial space in a Midtown location create an increased threat to public safety, given the national backdrop of gun violence in our communities? I don't know the answer to this question yet, because I don't think the Planning Board has officially explored this question through a public hearing. I respectfully demand for you to hold a public hearing on the site plan.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Schwartz-Hurkey, 35, Home Street. Come to you for the first time as the legislator-elect for Ulster County District 7, and I just wanted to also remind you that as your little brother, I am frequently reached out to by many constituents, friends, and neighbors for advice, and I would implore you to consider that you have the right, as the Planning Board, to call for a public hearing, according to Section 450-30, is that right? That I said. On issues of wide public concern. I would say that the shooting range is probably an issue of wide public concern, and so I would also lend my support to what Kristen was, and what she said. Thank you very much.
I'm a correctional officer for the State of New York, and presently...
Can you state your name?
My name is Denise Kaynat, K-Y-N-A-L-S-D-A. I'm a correctional officer for the State of New York, and I've been an officer for ten years, and I have the problem of trying to get to a range and shoot my weapon. Every year, we have to qualify, or we have, if we don't qualify, we lose our job. And I need a place to shoot. Presently, I'm going to the Bronx, I'm going to Manhattan, I'm going to Monroe, and the reason I'm more limited than maybe other officers is because I don't want to own my weapon. I want to rent a weapon. I want, I need to shoot and qualify with a .38 revolver, and I'm limited, and when I read the articles in the paper about a possible range opening up here in Kingston, I was overjoyed with it, but all the information that I'm reading is not going to help me any unless he rents the weapon, and because I don't want to own one, but I'm very happy to hear that something's going to come in here if it, I guess, meets my needs, if I can run. And that's basically my message, is it would really help me. And I'm not the only one, there's many officers that don't own weapons, but they need places to go. We're traveling all over the place, so.
How would you involve Dana from Kingston and 23 Coffee Place? And I'm here to talk in support also of the shooting range. There is no wide public interest. Yes, there are tons of shooters in Ulster County, and we have no place to shoot, especially in the winter. There are no other closed heated ranges in this area, to my knowledge. They're all outside. Morgan Hill has a shooting house, but the range itself is outside. People need practice, they need to be proficient. People being proud of their weapon, of a big range going to their car is not going to be an issue. Legally held guns are not a problem in our area, nor are they really a problem anywhere in the nation. It's not the legally held weapons that are the issue. It's criminal, and criminal doesn't care about the gun law. The, I know the building, it was used as a path, an orthopedic practice. It's well situated, there would be parking there on the corner. To have this building in a populated area is really not going to be an issue. In fact, it would be safer in a populated area than it would be out in the woods, since there will be people that would, there are potential witnesses. The Jean Daughery, and, you know, just enough people around. I used to live in Troy for a couple of years. The Lennox Burton Club has indoor range up there, it has been there for years and years. There is no crime associated with that gun range. And we do know that in other parts of Troy, there are some significant problems, but not around the range, because legal guns aren't there often. And as husband has said, it's kind of a catchphrase, like, I really kind of hate catchphrases. But the only thing that stops a bad guy with a gun is the good guy with a gun. I'm not advocating vigilanteism. Simply a matter of fact, the lowest rates of crime in the nation are not in areas where guns are banned. That's where the messengers all happen. The lowest rates of crime are where there's the highest percentage of illegally armed and carried guns by law-abiding citizens. So I support this, and the city means it. It's one more business that could actually bring some revenue and some interest into Midtown Kingston. Thank you.
Yeah, can you please repeat your name, sir?
Harold Grunewald.
Hi.
Hi there.
My name's John Meyer. We work right next to that building. There's a constant stream of teenagers going to the high school, to and from, every day, right by that building. People walk their dogs, it's like that whole neighborhood comes through to Broadway. Right next to a shooting, I think, this to me is a total outrage. I think there's a place, that's quite interesting, actually, that you need a place to shoot for your job. I think it's, there is an appropriate spot for that type of activity. There's the YMCA, High School Emergency Room. I mean, I just, I'm like, inside myself. Anyway, my landlord is not able to be present, so can I read his short letter, so that he can express his views? Dear Kingston Planning Board, I have a considerable trepidation over the proposed use of the property next to mine, 82 Prince. This is most certainly will negatively affect the rentability of my property, and I am writing to you to implore you for your consideration in this matter, as my tenants have already expressed great concern for their own various reasons. With so much idle available property along Route 28, which is more open and suited for this kind of thing, I don't understand the need to have this operation at the end of residential block in the middle of Midtown Kingston, particularly with one house right across the street. Thank you respectfully, John Grunellis. That's it, I also agree with him. I hope that there's more to scuff on this, just don't get us pushed through. That's it.
Please spell his last name.
John Grunellis.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Alana Berger, I live in Midtown on Franklin Street in Kingston. My daughter's Rosie, other daughter Hannah. And I also just don't want to agree with the comments of many people, including particularly Kristen Wilson, who've had a lot of good information. I just, I really, I can't imagine talking about something like a shooting range in the middle of Kingston, close to all the places people have mentioned, the high school, the Y, and other colleges, the Apple School, the Y, without a public hearing. Like whatever, thank you guys. You know, whatever side of the issue you're on, it feels like just in this little public moment here, there's so many people here who have things to say. I know about it just because I saw the article in the Freeman. Whenever I talk to people, particularly involving the PTO at George Washington where my daughter lives, whenever I ask people, "Oh, what do you think?", they're like, "A shooting range, what? I hadn't heard of that." Just feels like there's a lot more work that needs to be done to inform people and give people an opportunity to come in. So I really, I can't imagine that we're able to have a public comment here. Thank you.
Can I just, can we, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Yeah.
Can you just give us your name again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's Alana Berger.
Sorry, we're taking some time. Alana.
Alana, please fill out the ID and name.
Moving on to item number two, is the adoption of September 14th, 2015, Planning Board minutes, which had an automatic to October 13th. Any questions, concerns? Right this time, make a motion to approve the October 13th, 2015, Planning Board minutes, so a second. Second by Jake. All voters. Opposed, Gary.
We hear it over all of these stuff.
The only other option is to turn off all the microphones. Or maybe turn all off or on.
Give it to her.
I'm so sorry, do you guys, these guys have something they want to say for the public?
Oh, sure.
Is that okay? Just, it's gonna be like a second.
Do you want to come up here?
Have the date.
Can you say what it says?
No gunpowder.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Item number three is 176 A178, Ward 1, subdivision of the lands of Diane Augustin, Section Block 1 is 56.35-3-19 and 20, secret determination, Zone R6, Ward 8, Diane Augustin is the applicant owner.
Table.
Table?
Yeah.
Okay, I think a motion at the table, item number three. Second. Second by Chuck Palaco, for paper. Item number four, 74 Main Street, subdivision of the lands of Stanley and Kathleen Smith, Section Block 1 is 56.91-2-4.1, secret determination, Zone O2, Ward 2, Stanley and Kathleen Smith is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number four? Okay, so you'll get a plate. Can you state your names to the record, please?
Chris Zell.
Stanley R. Smith.
All right. Where are we?
You want to go, or you want me to go?
Last month, we had numerous items that we talked about, going to the zoning...
Last month, we had numerous items that we talked about, going to the zoning board and also some easements. And they are on the zoning board agenda for the 19th.
Yeah. I have the application.
Right, okay. And then also, the easements are...
We have deeds with the language that has been set up for the various easements, which we'll review, which you can have, and for Corporation Council's review. Concerning the common law. We also have information on the separation of utilities.
Yes, and that's going to be coming in too.
Right.
I also have the letters that I received today. The Central Hudson has approved the move of the electric meter. Because we have one for each house on basement currently. And water, sewer, and gas is going to be taken care of by Jim Noble. And I have listed a timeline here of how we've been working on it.
So we've also addressed the issue of parking and how the parking spaces will be allotted in the descriptions, the deeds. So I think we've covered the outstanding issues, provided that we get the zoning variances that we need. So what we were hoping was that we would get conditional approval pending these zoning variances.
Do you all remember this for the last one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we will run this through and then we'll get the maps of the separated services to our office so we can do staff approval.
You're going back to the firm of Belsham, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay.
I remember that. My flight is January 12th. So I'm trying to get things wrapped up before I go down.
We'll be done.
Nice to meet you. We work at the University of Sharjah. Sharjah's the emirate that's right next door to Dubai. So we're like 20 minutes from the Dubai airport.
Maybe we should do about the microphone taking here. We would love to. I would love to do something. You know, the only thing is that if we don't have the microphones, it doesn't record on the recorder in the back. Turn it down or something. This is annoying.
It's not the first time this happened.
There we go.
She's got to stay there all night though.
Well, you know.
She's gonna yell louder.
Oh, it's kind of... This is a stair.
No. We just handed this to us tonight. Yeah, it would be conditional with the separation of services, the zoning variance, and the approval of the easement grants.
For the record, if you... You know, Robert Neder is the attorney for Mr. Smith. So Andy and Bob Neder, if you get together on that, if there's anything that needs to be changed.
Can you send this electronically?
I sure can.
That would be terrific.
You can do anything you want.
I mean, it would make it easier if they've got comments.
Sure, sure. I will have it sent to you tomorrow.
Yeah. Great.
All right. Any other questions here for the court?
No.
Great.
Did we do the seeker on this a while last time?
No, no, you have to do the seeker.
Say, because this is an unlisted, actual secret, so if I can do the determination, if I'm listed. I have before me a short environmental assessment form that is in order. Just to make a motion to be approved, but a second. Second by John Guoire Jr., all in favor? Opposed? Carry. At this time, we make the motion that we approve item number four, Ward Policy 6. A separation of the services. Upcoming zoning variance approval. And also approval of the easement agreements through our Court Counsel. That's a motion to have a second. Second by Jamie, all in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Thank you for your...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
We also have that. That's what we need. How can that stand if it's open? What's the difference if we've got some static? We're not going to be... They don't make a recording. No, it's the... The static is the static.
I don't know where the static is coming from.
As long as it's not bad, then apparently we're recording.
We're trying, man.
Let me just check.
Okay. Going back on the right.
Can I try... Can I try taking all of your cell phones off of the table?
I turned mine off. I just turned off, but you could collect it anyway.
You said take everything electronic off of the table.
I don't have mine. Stuck in stairs.
It's probably Clark's video camera.
Yeah. That's what it is.
The static is... But I could turn the microphone off here, and I think it would be good. I'm posting this on YouTube anyway, for the record. You can hand it over to me.
For my record.
Okay.
Thank you, Captain. If you worry about the record, but the static is really interfering, trying to hear.
Right. Yeah, no, we realize that.
All right, we're gonna... I apologize for the static. We're just gonna have to review this one now, okay? Sorry. All right. Item number five is 301 Broadway. Special permit renewal to operate a gasoline station. Section Block 1 is 56.34-8-4. Secret determination, Zone C2. Ward 9, Speedway LLC is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number five? Not down.
Good evening, Chairman. My name's Ian Alexander. I'm a partner at Cunningham Fader. To my left is Andy Lautenbacher from Speedway.
So your first name, Ken?
Neil, N-E-I-L-L.
After transition, you're pretty good? Oh, that's so cool. Yeah. There are speakers. You're also in the store. Yes, we... First year. It really is nice. This place has got a nice spot. Steel. Nice, nice place. I bought it after this. Feel good? First... This is first year they're doing it, though? Oh, good, I have to buy a case and probably. You can still buy H-trucks. I know, I'm gonna do that too. Couple of walls are gonna hurt. Okay, so this is an application for a special permit to operate a gasoline station. The last one was renewed in 2010. No changes are proposed, right? I'm just going to operate it. Yeah, just the rebrand. Okay. Which has been ongoing. No complaints of building safety. Some police calls there since January. That's a difficult one. Is there a ceiling on the term period we can have?
No, that's why we're recommending that it's another five-year charge. It is the minimal issues.
Okay. Any other? Seems pretty well.
It's maintained well.
Okay. No determination by this board is needed for the seeker. It's type 2 action. Okay, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve, and you're good with that? We approve item number five for a period of five years with all original conditions carried forward. And that's a motion to have a second. Second by Chuck Palacco, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Thank you. Take care.
That's great. And thank you to staff. They made coordinating for that process really very easy. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for the noise blocking us.
Thanks, Ken.
Robert Chappell, and he doesn't need life. It's 1813. You're the last to go to.
There have been...
Not still around.
Have we gotten any letters in? Have we had any stand-up? Have we gotten any letters? About the process or something? Are you okay with that?
I'm pretty quiet. Nobody came last. You know, like...
When it came later, you got four. I think it was one.
It doesn't matter time and I think, okay, I'm hoping, no. You want to wait and go through? It's like everyone...
I mean, I'm like, I will. If you want. It was like my...
I'm not...
Well, I didn't... So then that's just here, about my...
We can talk about things later. Okay. Hi, Dr. Ruger. All right, item number six is 456 Waldeny Avenue. It's a special permit renewal to operate an animal hospital. Section Block 1 is 48.74-1-47. Secret determination, Zone C3, Ward 6. Dr. Arnold Ruger is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak on item number six? Okay. Here we are, I'm already started. All stats? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I like that.
How long have you been there?
I've been there since 1980. The place has been open since 1931.
Getting there is very difficult.
Yes.
We either...
All right. See, the last renewal is in October 2010, five years. Special permit is gonna change everything, it's the same way. All right. Anybody have questions? Five years, maybe more?
I've been in the issues.
I'll be increasing. If anyone wants to say anything.
It's been here since 1938. I think they'll come if anything changes. We were suggesting going to 10.
If there's a change of ownership.
It's good.
But if there's a change...
If there's a change, all the... I agree.
Okay. Under seeker, this is a type 2 action, so no further review of the orders required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number six for a period of 10 years. With the stipulation that if ownership changes, then the special permit will become null and void. We had a new ownership.
Okay, just come in.
Yeah, talk. 10 years, okay with you?
That sounds good.
So that's a motion to have a second. Second by Jamie Mills, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Moving on. Item number seven. Special permit renewal to rent out two rooms in home and occupied residence. Section Block 1 is 48.82-4-54.100. Zone R2, Ward 7, Gene Record is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak on item number seven? What do you... You look like Gene Record. No arguments, you're good. Okay. Have there been any changes in order? The rules have been rented out? No issues with building safety, no police incidents? The initial term was for six months, the most recent term was two years. The staff have recommended over two years. Is that okay? Most of the board? Any questions? Okay, this is a type 2 action under seeker, so no further review of the orders required under that. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number seven for a period of two years with all original conditions carried forward. I have a second one. Second by Chuck Palacco, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you, have a good evening. Item number 8, 43-45, Ward Front Street. Special permit to convert office space to two residential apartments. Section Block 156.314-2-9. Secret determination, Zone C2. Mixed use overluic overlay district, stockade historic district. Ward 2, Maria Olympus is the applicant. Local 47 LLC is the owner. Anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number 8? Just the microphone, hello Maria, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. Front Street. Front Street. Alright, um, so I'm seeing here that the, the reason for the conversion is because the offices have been recently vacated, and the space would be more viable as a block of apartments. What kind of work has to be done to...
There's a couple of walls that have to be taken down, and kitchens and showers put in.
You have space in the adjacent building too, right?
Yeah, I live, I live in that one, right.
Yes.
Does that need to be provided for yet?
No, it'll be acceptable.
Stanford's gonna be fine off for it, please. And records will be handled by the city?
Do you have a dumpster in the house? Where you, how do you, can we, um, I have the city pick up homes a week, and then I have boys management, another day we... I can store...
For the, for the restaurant?
Yeah. That's what everybody does, you know? Performance.
So these, you're not doing like Airbnb for years?
You're doing more of a permanent? Permanent. Yeah. They're just part of large studios, at scale.
Okay.
Jamie Parkin, this is a production. Is that you, you're going back to see, you're not going to work that thing out? Hi there. Uh, Parkin, uh, since you were producing before the couple of issues last year, I think we're gonna park it for this. Alright, a term for the special permit will need to be set in...
It has to be one year with initial. And then it can use that number.
Do you have a knox box now? A knox box?
For after-hours access on part apartment.
For the apartments or for the whole?
For the whole building.
Yeah, for the building, it's, if there's an issue, then, but they have, they have a key to access the box, and the keys are inside, so that they don't break down your door.
And we could even do it in a manner where you could have keys for the restaurant.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should have all of them, correct, and text minutes and...
I'll tell you how to go over it, if you want, if you want to worry about. Let's see, I guess, one year? And under seeker, it's an unlisted action, so what I have to do? I'll have to form me a short environmental assessment form that Stanford has said is in order. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve, second, second by Chuck Palacco, all in favor? Opposed? So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 8 for a period of one year with Ward Policy 6 and 22, which is above the number side of the policy. Final floor plans to be handed to staff, and also installation of a knox box. Have a second on that? Second by Jamie Mills, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
Alright, have a good night.
Take care.